You may now begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Roy Priest. I'm the Chair of the Housing Opportunities Commission, and I want to welcome our hybrid as well as our in-person members of our staff and commission to this special session on Leap Year Day, February 29th, 2024. We are here today to have a conversation and have discussion about our strategic plan. And so that is the purpose of the meeting. And so I will look that we have commissioners who are here present with us. Let me announce who they are. On hybrid with myself is Commissioner Pamela Byrd. In place at the HOC office, I see Commissioner Jeffrey Merkowitz, who's our Vice Chair, Commissioner Robin Solomon, who is our Chair for Tim, and Commissioner Fran Kelleher. We are still awaiting one person, Commissioner Linda Coon, but we have a quorum, so we can in fact proceed with the meeting. So what I'd like to do is to start this meeting by simply saying what we're here today to do is if we can advance towards the approval of a strategic plan. The document was sent out, we're going to discuss today, was sent out to the commission. We got that document over a week ago and provide opportunity for commissioners to provide some comments. Several commissioners did provide comments, and in fact, today Commissioner Kelleher provided an annotated copy of the strategic plan with her comments on it as well as one she had provided earlier. We also got comments from Commissioner Solomon and also from Commissioner Merkowitz, who provided comments to the plan. So today we'd like to see what we could do to, one, get a presentation, walking through this with our staff, being led by President Chelsea Andrews, and also by staff who've been intimately involved in this document. Provide opportunity for us to have conversations and discussions and answer any questions, so we can advance to, again, as I said earlier, toward trying to get some approval. Based on the comments that we received today, I mean, I think there are a few that go to the structural nature of the document. For example, questions raised relative to the insertion of metrics under some of our specific major goal areas, and also the issue around a financial plan for the document. We have seen those comments, and I think that I perceive them as well as commissioners and also President has also received those. So we will walk through this document and then open it up for conversations and discussion. So are there any other opening comments that a commission wants to make before we proceed? Seeing none, I will turn to you, President Andrews.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, members of the public, and the HLC team. Of course, we have been working on this strategic plan for quite some time and trying our best to align and get it right. And we're excited at this stage to share what is what we believe months of hard work to set the key priorities for our agency, which includes a new vision, a new mission, and for the first time ever, core values that help center our work. If you would please go to the next slide. Today's special session is designated to support the board in reviewing and updating our draft of the 24 through 2029 strategic plan. Our goal here is today is to obtain any specific recommendations and changes that can be incorporated in the final draft, with the hope that we are able to present a final draft to the commission for review and approval at our March 6 meeting. Our staff recommends that as we go through today that we have an opportunity to talk about each of the objectives, discuss and vote on any amendments if there is a need for that, and once the review is finalized, have an opportunity to get a final vote. So today, as we walk through the slides, our agenda will include a brief background on where we've been. And quite frankly, when you've been in a process like this for some time, a refresher is not a bad thing. So it will help us all remember how we started this process, how we approached this plan, as well as what would be the next steps in this process. Next slide. And so just as a point of reference and to frame us all, we know that we retained a highly rated consulting company to walk us through and to help us with this strategic planning process, that RFP and the selection of that company was very well vetted, and we felt as though we were going to have the benefit of their expertise and had a full team that has worked with us. They are not able to join us in today's meeting, but they are recording and watching live and will take the feedback from today's meeting to incorporate in any additional iterations of the plan. But a part of what we undertook in the beginning was also an opportunity to review multiple other agencies. We looked at over eight different housing authorities' house strategic plans, many of which did not have strategic plans. Quite frankly, most did not have strategic plans. We looked at cities. We looked at our own various plans, Thrive and other plans that will influence and/or impact the work we're doing. We also took time to look at HUD's strategic plan and look at how they approached the plan for HUD over the next number of years that came out of this last administration. And so we learned that different organizations, jurisdictions, and as we know, individuals have different perspectives on the strategic planning process. There is no template. There's no right or wrong way to do this. And in fact, what we do in this process is come together to align and agree on what we want our process to be. And I will tell you, there are no two strategic plans that are the same. As we agreed in this process, we would take a two-step approach. We thought that that was best because, one, we wanted first to align on goals, objectives, core values, and then take the next step of putting more meat on the bone, and then ultimately coming back with a more comprehensive Phase Two, which will be the implementation plan. I will admit that along with this process, it is the distinction between strategic plan and implementation plan that has caused us to trip up in different instances, trying to determine what should be in different phases. But both phases come before this board for vote and approval. Both phases are instrumental in us seeing the success of this plan ultimately. The thought of the two-step approach was one that would allow us not to put all of our resources upfront in researching, determining feasibility, figuring out all of the things before the board said, yep, that's the thing I want us to do, the feasibility, the research, and the additional legwork around. So it was first getting those first clear objectives set through Phase One, and then to do that deeper dive in Phase Two. If you can go to the next slide, hearing the feedback, this is a new slide, hearing the feedback just within the last 24 hours in regards to some of the concerns related to metrics, some of the concerns related to feasibility, wanted to take a moment just to orient us on what does implementation look like and how we will, how we're proposing that we move forward. So as we move forward in this process, once and when the commission adopts the high-level strategic plan that we've set out, our staff, the executive leadership staff, will form cross-divisional teams to address each goal and objective. We will be guided with a consultant, and as the commission recalls, we bifurcated the contract here so that we could have an opportunity to determine who suited best for Phase Two of this process to help us through the implementation. But we'll be guided with a consultant's support to help determine and present timelines, help present high-level matrix, help draft budgets and determine staffing, because there is a, it's a heavy intensified process to get that right. And so we'll, we will go through that process. We will then, and that's step two, then our team will meet, we'll discuss the outcomes of our, of our cross-divisional teams, review and present them. And you know, there is a step that's missing. This is not the latest version. There's an important step, actually. Step three is that we will come to the board. And so this version doesn't have that, that, but I will make sure that we, my version does, that it reflects in the documents that go in the public sphere. But there's a step that involves us coming to the board so that you all could review and approve the metrics, the feasibility, the timeline, because all of these goals and objectives won't be accomplished in year one. They're pretty ambitious and will require a holistic approach on how we address these different goals and the sequence in which we address them. Once that's finalized, and once the board gives us that feedback, we jump back in as an executive team, fine-tune. We have found a wonderful resource that allows us to have transparency for the public. Gaithersburg actually has a tool that we think is a state-of-the-art tool that allows the public to see metrics that have been set out on a public platform, but it also is a tool that could be utilized inwardly for us to track even more additional metrics that might be set out for the internal operations. But this is a tool that we will use to hold ourselves accountable, to share with the public how we're accomplishing each of the goals that are set out. And that is a little picture of that, and we can, of course, pull it up and show you larger in the next phase. And then we'll be tracking. We'll be reporting out as we already do on a monthly basis, as a court, on a quarterly basis, but also the public will see how we're moving along with our strategic plan. And so that is the next phase. We're at the phase where we want to be assured that the goals and objectives that you all have approved under those three tranches that you already approved meet your satisfaction. And so today, we will walk through each of those. We will have an opportunity to hear from the commission if these are in alignment with where we should move, if you have modifications, and we will make those modifications before our next meeting in March and before we take on the next task, which will be an important one of creating metrics, timeline, feasibility. And so, next slide. I, just as, and again, the public who are joining us and may not have a full appreciation of really how much stakeholder engagement went into this process. This is extremely important. This process has evolved from extensive stakeholder engagement. We interviewed over 50 individuals, but we also had an opportunity to survey and received a remarkable response rate to our surveys. Over 2,000 people responded to our surveys that helped inform the recommendations that are before us. We had a virtual and in-person town hall, so two separate meetings to engage with the public. Almost 300 people participated in those meetings, and we look forward to circling back with them to let them know how their voices were heard. We had focus groups where over 50 participants were engaged and had different focus groups based on different populations that we serve. And of course, we had extensive, and it's in our appendix, ecosystem and current state analysis that was done to help inform the decisions for the board. We also had an opportunity to look at best practices and a SWOT analysis. And as you see here in regards to commission deliberation, of course, there were different iterations that were provided to the commission, opportunities for feedback, meetings that occurred, all starting in August, leading us to this point here on this Leap Day in 2024. Next slide. What was agreed upon in our, one of our prior meetings was our vision, our mission, and our core values. Those are reflected here. They have already been embodied in our, our agency, and I will say have already made a substantial shift. This is what we are using when we recruit people. This is how we are orienting ourselves. And, and there is a lot of pride around the establishment of our core values and the clarity now in regards to our vision and our mission. So thank you for that vote of confidence as we move forward in this process. Next slide. And we agreed at the last meeting, and we heard the commission agree, that these are the high-level three strategic goals that we would center ourselves around, that we would center ourselves around expanding affordable housing in Montgomery County, enhancing the lives that we touch through supportive services and partnerships, as well as excelling as a world-class organization. Next slide.
I am going to turn it over to our Vice President of Government Affairs, Ken Silverman. I might have, did I go on the right spot? Here we are. Yes.
Number, perfect.
The warm handoff to Ken Silverman to help walk us through the remaining presentation.
Thank you so much, President Andrews. For the record, Ken Silverman, Vice President of Government Affairs for HOC. I do just a quick privilege to sort of break into the regular scheduled programming and provide two very brief government affairs updates. Both, I think, very good news. One is that you may have seen the House passed a CR about an hour ago, and so we're hopefully averting a government shutdown that was due tomorrow. And the second is that you also may have seen that the White House announced a new phase of their housing supply action plan, and one of the items that they included was an indefinite extension of the FFB FHA program, which is a really important tool that HOC is a heavy user of, and you know, was a high item on the legislative priorities you adopted. And HOC actually was heavily involved in the lobbying effort with Treasury HUD and actually a little bit with the White House to get that over the finish line. We're really excited about that. So it's been a privilege to be on the strategic planning team with President Andrews, with our Senior Executive Vice President, Karyn Brown, and with Tia Blunt, our Vice President of Communications and Public Affairs. As Chelsea mentioned, Public Works is not able to be here today, but they were heavily involved in the development of this draft, and they will be involved in making any changes that the commission directs. Again, very high level, you know, the way we have been looking at it based on the previous discussions we've had is that, you know, this phase of the strategic plan would really provide the signposts and directions where the commission wants staff to push, and then the implementation plan would be where we, you know, look in that direction and say, okay, are we taking a train, a plane, a bike? You know, how far can we go? How and how fast? And work out all those elements. We very much intend that each of these objectives, you know, included in the plan is a marker for further exploration, and of course, you know, is the beginning of a conversation with the commission, and certainly not the end. And, you know, so subject to all, all further commission approvals. In this new draft, we attempted to capture the specific feedback that we received from the commission, and as well as do our best to balance the specific individual feedback that we got. Of course, you know, you all will be the judge of whether we accomplish that. And then we also tried to make a number of changes that would accommodate the general comments that we received about, you know, wanting the plan to be bolder, the items to be more clear and action-oriented. And so we have made a number of changes that were not, you know, specifically requested by the commission from the last draft to try to accommodate, you know, some of those general comments. And, you know, I think one of the main ones was moving a lot of the background section, you know, to the back section so that it's really more forward-looking right from the get-go, as well as adding a couple of new ideas that have popped up, you know, through ongoing discussion with staff, you know, since the last commission review. And since we had the opportunity to come back to the commission, we wanted to include those for your consideration. So our suggestion today, as President Andrews said, we're gonna, was to go through these one by one, have the commission weigh in, any changes, you know, remove, add. And then at the end, the commission can decide if you feel that we're ready with those changes to authorize us to prepare a final draft and a resolution for the, the commission to approve and, and move on to Phase Two. So the, under Goal One, and this goal really is oriented around, you know, the housing component of our mission. Goal Two is focused on the people that we serve, and Goal Three is focused on HOC as an organization. So under Goal One, these are the three objectives that we've identified. To expand HOC's portfolio of high-quality affordable housing, to expand housing supply generally in Montgomery County, acknowledging that, you know, HOC alone will never be able to solve the, you know, affordable housing challenges in the county. And then third, to expand and optimize rental assistance. Next slide, please. So one of the ways that we've tried to make these objectives a little clearer and more action-oriented is by adding an additional layer of kind of sub-goals under each one. And so that's what you see here. So for A, these are the, the four ways that we suggest that the commission could expand HOC's portfolio over the next four years. We did break out on the next slide, the priorities, just to make them a little easier to read. But wanted you to take a look at all four of these, and, and I can pause and ask, you know, if there's any discussion or, or questions about any of these items.
Go ahead, Fran.
I will start, and this is gonna be a general comment that you hear often today from me, but something like maximize production of new affordable housing, to me, that's not something we can decide to approve or not. We don't know what that would cost the agency. We don't know what it would take in terms of staffing to do it. We don't know what we would get for it, and we don't know thus, we don't have any sense of a cost-benefit. The role of a strategic plan to me is for the board to focus the organization's resources on those strategies that it feels are going to be most productive in meeting its mission. And without information about who is served, how many people are served, what the cost is, and over what timeframe, how would we be addressing the overall gap? And we need that for all of the initiatives, because we have to be able to weigh the cost and benefit of investing our resources in one initiative versus in another initiative in order to make a strategic plan. That's what a strategic plan is, is the decision to invest your resources in one initiative over another initiative, because resources are always limited. So I look at this and set clear priorities? Absolutely. We should have clear priorities from the board as to where we think our real estate pipeline should do. For the other three, not, not enough information to evaluate.
First off, I guess I want to really thank the staff and appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this, because it is hard work. I've, I've done strategic planning, you know, for my own organization, and, and it's hard. So, and I want to acknowledge that, you know, I think this is, is definitely an improvement over, you know, where we've been. And, you know, I think we've been, you know, moving, you know, very much in the right direction. Chelsea, I appreciate a lot of your introductory comments. I think, you know, part of the challenge obviously is reconciling different views of what a strategic plan is, my own included, there. And, you know, obviously, you've got six different commissioners here who may have six different views of, of what a strategic plan should accomplish or should not do. I think, you know, in my mind, you know, I think it is appropriate for a strategic plan to be ambitious. And it is, you know, it is, it is part of the vision of an organization and about what it wants to accomplish, and it's in many ways aspirational. Obviously, anything we do, I mean, to me, it almost goes without saying that anything we end up doing to implement the strategic plan will need to be evaluated in terms of, you know, the feasibility, the financial feasibility. And that's what we do on a regular basis, you know, with every specific decision that we make. So, you know, and I mean, to me, you know, terms like maximize, preserve, grow, those are, are broad, general, they're not, you know, specific projects. You know, we're not getting down into the level of saying, you know, I mean, that, those should be our goals. Those should be the things that we are trying to do to maximize production, you know, within the, within whatever resources that we have available to us. You know, absolutely. Does it, you know, here, we're not saying we're going to, you know, increase production of new affordable housing by 100,000 units in five years. You know, when we get down to that, then I think you need to be a little more specific in, in terms of like what's reasonable, what's feasible. You know, I don't, I have no problem with setting stretch goals, you know, but, but a term like maximize or preserve is, I mean, to me, it's fairly benign. Those are things that we should be doing. And I think the success of a strategic plan, you know, really does come down to the implementation of that strategic plan. And there are definitely things that I would like to see more of in the strategic plan. You know, in, in my view, like, setting the priorities, you know, the priorities are part of the strategic plan. You know, so from my perspective, that's where, you know, we would have been setting the priorities broadly here. I mean, you know, we say set clear priorities, and then we, you know, the plan actually lists a number of priorities. So I think it's how we end up reconciling, or, you know, when they're conflicting, or which ones, you know, what we, which ones are the, you know, if they're ranked, or how we're going to, to balance those. But, you know, I am also hearing that there is a plan, you know, we will do this as part of an implementation plan. And so, like, I am trying to think of this as a whole. And that, not that, we, we may not accomplish everything in this specific document, but that between this and the implementation plan, and then ultimately, you know, again, in the actual implementation of the strategic plan, where we look at individual decisions about what's, you know, the cost-benefit or the feasibility, you know, and, but like, but it is within those, like, do we even pursue something, a specific decision or a specific project, because it fits into our strategic plan? That's, to me, that's kind of the goal of a strategic plan, is to give us, I think Ken may have said the guideposts, you know, something that helps push us in the right direction and make sure that we're all rowing in that direction. You know, whether it, you know, whether we have figured out, you know, we may end up saying, you know, there are certain things that would push us in this direction but are not financially feasible for us. But, and there may be other things that we say are financially feasible, but, you know, they don't really fit into the direction that we're trying to go right here. That's kind of how I think of the strategic plan. So again, I think, you know, this, there, there's been a lot of progress in the development of the strategic plan. Again, I want to acknowledge like the, the really hard work that I know has gone there there's been a lot of progress in the development of the strategic plan. Again, I want to acknowledge like the the really hard work that I know has gone into this. And, you know, I think I I've submitted some comments and, you know, some specific suggestions. But like, I think if, as long as we are including, addressing some of these issues, you know, within the whole, I think we're in the in the right place. And I'm not opposed to like having some kind of general statement. I mean, Fran, I I definitely don't disagree with you that anything we do needs to be financially feasible. You know, if we want to include some kind of statement within the strategic plan that, you know, makes that clear, that says, you know, within the resources of the, you know, you know, but but this is the direction that we're going. So.
Yeah, I mean, if I can jump in here, can you all hear me? Okay, yeah, because I I mean, I think I I totally agree with the point that you're trying, that you are making, Jeffrey, and also agree with the considerations that as as Fran has framed them. I mean, certainly the commission does not want to take any action and we don't take any action where we happen deliberated and come to a decision that these are things that we can do within our authority, within our resources, with our capacity to be able to do them. And I think the same thing will happen. I think, you know, one of the things that perhaps has been a has been an impediment to moving us forward has been understanding this delineation between the strategic plan and the implementation plan. And I think that, you know, we have struggled with the strategic plan at the same time that the implementation plan really carries forth a lot of the testing of what the plan is. I mean, it's going to look at the issues around what do we need to have in terms of capacity within the staff to do it, financial capacity to do it, is it feasible to do it? So I think the implementation plan would do that. So as we move forward, we have to have some faith in that that what what will come back to the commission for our approval will be, in fact, those very important decision points that I think that that Fran is is making. So we are mindful of that and and I and to put in some preamble language in our document that simply says that everything we are we are doing here is predicated on the fact that we have capacity to do it, the financial resources to do it, it's determined to be feasible and reasonable, you know? So I think that we could certainly put that kind of language in a preamble statement.
Chelsea, I thought your introduction was great. Thank you. My biggest concern and and a share of Fran's concern is the most important part of a strategic plan, other than identifying the goals, is the hard decisions on allocating resources. And so your your comments really were very helpful. And I appreciate them because I read the document. I think to myself, Ken has to find all the money to do this. And it doesn't say that directly, but, you know, poor Ken. He's going to get the federal government to fund all of what we need to have, you know? And and so I I understand the context better, having come into this probably two thirds of the three quarters of the way through. That you'll now be presenting to us which, you know, there's a for profit element, a nonprofit and an internal subsidy, all these things that and homeownership, no one's against anything of, you know, can't do it all, but you'll come back to us with the key performance indicators. And if we're going to do an in-house rental subsidy program, which division, where's the money coming from, so on and so forth. So I really do appreciate very much you putting this into context. Ken, I think, is relieved that he doesn't have to do it all. And Fran, you're you're right. It's it's very broad brush, but I I now understand better that it's designed that way. Like Jeff or probably everybody else, we've all done strategic plans, most of which become doorstops, but not always. And and the most important part is those key performance indicators and you're putting people on notice that if they accept it, they're going to do it and and then allocating scarce resources. And and so I understand better. You know, you and I disagree on some of the resources we may find and where they come from, but that's a fair discussion. And so I very much look forward to defining the resources and which of these things make the most sense. I hope we don't spend time today wordsmithing this thing. Please. But to me, that's the most exciting part is the allocation of of resources.
Just for the record, I I can't wait to go find money for all the things in this plan.
But I think the hardest part is going to be, you're going to have to use internal resources. You know, you're not going to get it all. Certainly from Annapolis and the feds and probably not the county, but but I look forward to that. But thank you, though. I really appreciate that, Chelsea.
If I could respond.
No, go ahead, Fran. I'll I'll come back. The only point I was going to make was that we as a commission, we approve two things. We approve an annual budget. And the annual budget should set out and should be correlated to what it is that we are intending to do, this laid out in our strategic plan and will be reinforced by what it is in our implementation plan that will be the testing rod for the strategic plan. We also, in fact, as you know, we approve on a project by project basis, the financing for all of the major real estate developments that we do. So we we are looking at the financial picture from at least two vantage points. One is our annual budget that we approve. And secondly, is our is our regular project financing plans that we also review and approve. So those deal with the whole having the financial underpinning to to carry out those portions of the plan to either rely upon direct real estate financing or rely upon depending upon the resources that we have available to agency through our annual budget. Fran, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. I would say, first of all, on that, if we had a budget that was actually programmatic and department based, I would agree with you if that we would be making decisions in the budget that would be related to these. The way we do it on a fund level is so general, you would have no idea which of any of these may be in it. But that's just the way we do budgeting and we can change that. We can make it more programmatic. I've certainly worked in many organizations that do that and particularly for new initiatives, that any new initiative has to be called out separately and have a discussion about the staffing, the financing, where it's coming from, you know, those kinds of things, which might be a nice improvement for us to make in support of this kind of planning. I would say if we are going to have a preamble that's going to take care of some of this, in my experience, if a board passes a strategic plan, it authorizes staff to spend time and resources on those things. What I'm hearing makes me think that we need to say in the preamble that we have not authorized the expenditure of resources and staff time on these until each of them come back as a plan that we would approve individually. If that's the case, then I'm more comfortable. As this is stated right now, I would not feel comfortable just turning staff loose to do any of this with no scope, no source of funding, no clarity as to how that would work.
Wait a minute, Fran, let me understand. I'm 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 trying to understand. Hi, everybody. I'm trying to understand. Now, from what I see here and what I've been reading for the last 10 or 15 minutes, this is staying to our, this is saying to our residents that H O C projects beginning construction of over 2500 homes by 2029 with 30 to 50% of which would be income restricted resources. That's a broad statement right right in itself, and that's telling you exactly what we project to do in that in that timeframe. I don't agree with telling them about the resources. I don't feel as though that they need to know that. They don't need to know where we get our resources. I mean, if that if that's something that they that they want to look up, they can because they know, you'd be surprised at what the residents know. But at least that's putting that statement right there, affordable housing with so many people being on the list. That's, that's an eye opener right there. And and it's not saying we haven't done in one year or two years. It's giving it a wide scope and it's telling you the percentage. My opinion, I actually like these this particular goals here far as the portfolio of a high quality affordable housing, because that's what we in the business for.
And Commissioner Kroom, just to clarify, that's our, you know, sort of adding up of the existing projects that the commission has approved previously under our existing resources. And certainly then the goal would be to, you know, find as as many additional resources as possible to, you know, explore doing more.
So what what you're saying, Fran, is they need to put something on here stating where we would get the resources from before we would say that this was okay?
Thank you. I I think that we as a board need to know where the resources are coming from, what magnitude they are and what we're getting in return for that to be sure that we are fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility that the organization maintains financial solvency both in the short and the long term. So it's more that we need to know that. We're a public agency spending public money. And as such, most of it is information that people can look up anyway. So I'm not as concerned about having it be public. I'm more concerned that we exercise our fiduciary responsibility as the place where the buck stops. The buck stops here with the seven of us to make sure that H O C's resources are being invested in the best way possible to get the most people housed in affordable housing who need it.
If I if I can, if if I think we've had a little, I want to see if we can advance it to the next slide if we could, but but if I could say that if we we will restructure, we will structure the language in the document in the very beginning, it makes it very clear that this strategic plan is predicated on the fact that we have, that that we will, in fact, recognize the necessity of having adequate resources, of having of pursuing things that are feasible financially and have the capacity to be able to do them. And at the same time, that this is setting forth a beginning point based upon what we do in our implementation plan to carry these actions out. And if we can ma- make that language correct, then it sounds to me like the commissioners are prepared to then move this document forward under that, under that, under that understanding. Am I correct? Would that be correct?
I would need it to include approval of specific initiatives.
That's fine.
Not just say that overall, we're going to do something that's financially feasible.
On an individual basis.
But I guess I'm I'm a little confused, Fran, just because we may not know every initiative that is going to come up in the next five years. Right? Well, and I think it always is, right?
We have not had, we have not worked with this style of strategic plan where there's simply guideposts at the beginning. And so it's not clear to me that there would be that understanding on everyone's part.
Yeah, I mean, I think our previous strategic plan was, I I mean, in some ways, much less specific than this and, you know, maybe put in some numbers, but I don't think that included anything about, you know, it certainly didn't address specific initiatives. And I don't think anything was, you know, preapproved. I I mean, to me, like, again, this is about saying, you know, we're going to work to maximize production of new affordable housing. We may not know everything we're going to do at this point to to do that. But as things come up, you know, there will be an evaluation of whether it is feasible or not. And to the extent that there are decisions that need to be brought before the board, they should be. And presumably they will be.
Okay, if we could, if we could, any other perspectives that have not been heard? If not, I I I think we understand very clearly what it is. The staff has heard this. And I think that we can, we will, we will restructure, we will not restructure, we will make sure that the that that the points are being made are very clearly defined in the document. Okay, if we could, then move forward. We can always come back to this point before we end, but could you call ahead and continue to try to move through this as exponentially as possible, Ken?
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the, you know, more detail on the priorities under number one on the previous slide. So I I can pause here for a second if anyone wants to discuss, or we can move on to the next objective. This is, you know, again, repeating everything that has been, and this was actually unchanged from the last draft as well.
I would say that our true mission is the first three of those. The rest are nice to do to help our fellow organizations. I think expanding H O C capacity in and of itself is not a priority, is not something that there needs to be a reason to expand it and a sense that we're getting more back for that. Again, a cost benefit analysis as to why would we expand H O C's capacity versus the county council putting a 30% affordable requirement on all private development and taking care of things that way. I do not see number six as necessarily a priority. I I think there are ways in which we will want to expand H O C, but I think that needs to be based on what we're doing and the requirements to do that and what we will get for the resources we invest in that way.
On this particular point, on number H O C capacity, this is relating specifically to the matter dealing with with advancing and the real estate pipeline. This is, as I understand, that's what this is relating to, that one specific real estate pipeline on expanding our capacity to be able to undertake more, to be able to do more, therefore producing more affordable housing.
And and take on new initiatives and thus you need more capacity? Would that be the right way to?
Yes.
Yeah, and as I said, Mr. Chair, this, you know, within the context of, you know, there's a a separate objective that's focused on broader, you know, staff capacity, but I think, you know, the idea was that when you're looking at individual transactions going forward, that there's a desire, and I know H O C has long prioritized, you know, the mixed income approach, both for the, you know, philosophical reasons that, you know, we don't want to create concentrations of poverty and we we want to have integrated communities, but also because, you know, it makes them more self sustaining over the long term and that they produce adequate cash flow to be able to maintain and and renovate the properties. So certainly not suggesting every, you know, clearly that we're, there's going to be a lot of subsidy in the affordable housing that that H O C produces, but.
I read this as you you might do new initiatives and you'll need more capacity to do new initiatives and and that to me followed logically. And and so I guess I disagree with you somewhat, Fran, assuming I read it the right way.
I read it as it was one of our priorities for H O C's pipeline, expand the capacity.
Yes, you'd be able to do more. Okay, we hear the point. Can we keep on moving?
Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so this is objective B, which relates more broadly to the county. I did see in a couple of the individual feedback you provided that we could probably that we could certainly clarify the title of this objective to make it a little clearer what we're saying here. And really that, you know, the idea is just acknowledging that, you know, general housing supply is a core part of this problem. Resources are our resources primarily do come from taxpayer dollars. And that without having more across the board, you know, we're not going to be able to make much progress. So really, you know, sort of lifting up the need to have that central advocacy strategy. You know, I think this is where the annual legislative priorities process comes in to be able to do an annual check in and and, you know, set clear priorities based on what we're seeing. And then also looking at supporting the broader goals of of increasing supply generally. And then the third item is really, you know, a couple of of innovative new initiatives that can have come through the commission since we began this strategic planning process, such as the Faircloth to Rad approach that, you know, Red that the commission approved for with enterprise. That the commission approved for with enterprise. Um and so, you know, really adding in um exploring um some of the. Uh ability to work with both nonprofit and and uh for-profit private developers to uh, you know, in a more direct way.
Some of this read to me as as the Ken Silverman Full Employment Act, because they take you decades to, but. Um I'm glad you put the for-profit part in there, um just because it seems like there aren't many for-profit developers doing affordable housing in this county. I don't want to add things to it, but. There should be some context to added that maybe we generate our own internal resources that can be used differently. I don't want to get into wordsmithing and everything else, but I think that could be part of the resources that are brought to bear is what can we do internally to generate more? Profits on a deal that can go into something else or or whatever, um without identifying it very specifically. Um and it would take you off of some of the burden of doing everything.
I I will say I I totally, uh, you know, I think that's part of what we meant by growing H O C's capacity as well uh in the in some of the prior slides. And uh I'm very excited to, you know, get to the next slide and talk to you a little bit about this uh direct rental assistance. Concept, and I I think what you your your comment there really fits in with uh with that piece as well.
Uh on the second voted point. The word that word advocate for me simply says that's the behavior we're going to go out and we're going to try to do what we can to encourage, to advance, whatever. I want to tell you that what we want to do is remove barriers to housing production. That's 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 what we want to do. We want to remove barriers to housing production. And and to advocate, how do you measure that? I mean, we want to, we want to remove barriers. How we drop the word advocate there?
Now note that I said this, my comments, to me, it's not just removing barriers, it's uh like uh finding incentives or, you know. Supporting the creation of incentives to create affordable housing.
And I think what we were doing was hedging in terms of the fact that we actually don't have the ability in in of ourselves to remove barriers or.
Now, this is advocating.
Right, right. And so this is where we we were just trying to be clear in terms of what our role is. But definitely uh in agreement in terms of the overall objectives, removing those barriers, really incentivizing additional um engagement from our private partner peers. But also taking into consideration what our limitations are and actually effectuating this particular um goal.
Okay.
Would this include working more closely with the uh Parks and Planning Commissioners?
Yes.
And the county council and the folks that actually do have the authority to change zoning to revise the process for approval of plans. That we don't have.
Yes.
I I uh would like to encourage that, as I said in an earlier meeting, most of the major levers we do not control. They're controlled by other governmental organizations. So to the extent that we can work with them on this, I think that's important.
And I I I support what Fran is saying there, and I think it's it's an important point. And I mean, even, I think, within our priorities, the extent to which we are coordinating with our county partners. About, you know, the priorities for the county. As well and like, you know, where where the county is trying to encourage growth or sees a need for housing. I mean, I think is needs to be part of our thinking as well, so.
Absolutely.
I I I I I remove my comment and maintain I'll support advocate to remove barrier for housing production, okay? It can remove one.
All right, next next slide, please. Uh so uh this third objective here is focused on rental assistance. Um as you know, it's a, you know, a the second major. Part of the housing we provide in addition to the the housing that we own directly. And so, uh, you know, I would, I would focus on one and two on this slide and then. Uh because it is a, you know, a new topic that we are dropping in to the commission here, I I did add. An additional slide with some context about this um H O C bridge. Concept, I I do want to say that on the, you know, I can save that those comments for the next slide, but uh. You know, the two here, I I think are, you know, number one, really focused on. Ensuring that anytime there's new vouchers available from HUD, uh from, you know, the state, from the county, we do have rental assistance funds that flow from all three. Uh of those partners that we're maximizing those that we're we're applying to every available uh NOFO that were. You know, really, uh and then, you know, ensuring that our utilization is is high. You know, the second one about maintaining high performing status. You know, that's obviously a federal designation related to our our federal program, which is the vast majority of the resources. But I I think we would extend the the spirit to the local and state funded programs as well that, again, you know, we're going to really. Maximize the utilization and the user friendliness of all these programs. So why don't I pause there and see if there's comments or discussion about those two and then uh we could take, I I would like to spend a little bit more time with the third one. Okay, uh so next slide, please.
It was just going to be the same comment. Some of the. I we still have to evaluate the vouchers that were offered to make sure they're not asking things of us that would cost us more than we can commit to, et cetera. And that that has to be done each time, but. As I understand it, that comes through the administrative committee anyway to accept. Recommend whether we accept vouchers that are offered to us from HUD, whether the state has a process like that. We'll see when they roll out their program.
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, you know, this concept, I will say, is uh something I'm I'm uh pretty passionate about. And I think it pulls together a couple of the threads that um, you know, you you have individually called out as well. So uh one component here is the idea that uh, you know, we do potent have the potential to generate revenue with some of our. Uh operations and particularly the the Housing Production Fund uh projects. And and, you know, one of the things that I know we've heard sometimes is, well, you know, it's it's only thirty percent affordable. You know, I know we uh with each project pushed to get that as high as we can. But uh one idea is to uh create a uh a a program. That, you know, would be available to, it's to the degree that we are successful, continue to be successful with those projects and we have. The ability to generate internal revenue, uh that we have the ability to then um, you know, send that uh funding, uh, you know, directly out to the people that, you know, need it most in the community. And so this is uh really a vehicle that could be be that. The other piece is that HUD has uh begun exploring, you know, the concept of direct rental assistance. And this really flows from uh a lot of the work that has um happened around the country around guaranteed income or basic income. You know, there's a a a lot of existing evidence about the effectiveness and positive outcomes of of these programs. And then there's uh, you know, a huge pool of pilots that were funded through uh, you know, some of the COVID federal relief. Um and so there's, there's more and more evidence pouring in. Um HUD has uh identified as a priority to try to get pilots around the country, exploring different ways to apply those concepts to rental assistance. Um and so, uh, you know, this would be an opportunity for us to uh participate in that conversation. Um and I I do want to say, you know, we would not expect any of this language on this slide, you know, to be in the. In the plan, there was uh, you know, language in the plan itself that explains what we're. Um thinking, but you know, this is really about opening a a conversation with the commission. And certainly we would expect to, you know, bring forward a much more detailed, you know, and have the commission weigh in on all the details of of whether we move forward, of program design, of funding sources. And uh this is really uh trying to just get a a high level uh picture of whether the commission is is interested in pursuing this concept. And then uh, you know, going out to see uh what kind of funding we can identify to do this. We do think there could be interest from the county potentially to provide, you know, more traditional funding stream to fund some of these positions. And uh, you know, I think two additional layers to this are, one. That if we were to uh, so the core of direct rental assistance is that uh with the voucher program. You're uh negotiating a contract with the landlord and then paying the subsidy to the landlord, so the tenant pays their rent. H O C pays rent to the landlord. Um here, we would pay that subsidy directly to the tenant. And then they would be responsible for paying their rent. Um and that gives them the flexibility to budget, uh to set their own priorities uh based on the resources that are available. And uh it also potentially gives us uh gives them more flexibility as far as uh choosing the type of housing that they want to live in. And, you know, setting their own priorities there, uh because this would be a local program and not subject to the federal regulations. We could look at all of the different administrative barriers and not having to negotiate and, you know, contract directly with the landlords. Does create the ability to remove a a a number of the administrative burdens that we have in place uh to make this uh, you know, easier, both for for H O C, but more importantly, for the recipients. And uh, you know, the final piece here is if we're able to offer this, um particularly to uh existing voucher holders. Who are at the higher end of the um income spectrum. Then we could use those local subsidies to provide a shallower subsidy that, you know, the higher your income, the shallower the subsidy that you need. Um and that would free federal vouchers to be able to serve people at thirty percent AMI or below um off of the waitlist. Um and so you're actually able to get a little bit of leverage for every local dollar that you put in. Uh, you know, we think you could get uh maybe a dollar ten of uh, you know, federal or or an additional ten cents of of federal money. And as you know, you know, our utilization on the voucher program is high, but we do have, you know, unspent reserves. Because of the uh the structure of that program. Uh and the final comment I wanted to make is that we have uh had some, you know, preliminary sort of expressions of interest from. The um Turner Center at NYU um in being a research partner uh for uh, you know, a direct rental assistance program. And so they could help us to uh, you know, to do with the program design as well as measuring outcomes. And uh, you know, being able to report back, collecting data, and then also, you know, if it's successful, uh, you know, being able to share those, capture those best practices and and share them. As part of this sort of broader uh national conversation.
Let me just chime in here. Um first of all, and thank you, Ken, and this is something that. Ken has been extremely excited about and that we as a team have had an opportunity to really um have some creative thought partnership around. And let me um kind of share what the concept is and what we're experiencing. There's not a lot of flow through our portfolio. When you move into a property, you stay in a property. When you get a voucher, you keep a voucher. And we have thirty seven thousand people on our waiting list. The question has been, how can we build enough to address all of these people? We're turning that question into, how can we ensure that people are able to move out of these programs so we can serve more people? At the same time, we have to build, at the same time, we have to turn that same question around on its head and say, something's happening here. If you're stagnant in our program and you're not moving on. And so we have our resident services component that helps to provide that wraparound um support, education, opportunities. And we also recognize that within the confines of our programs, federal, et cetera, there are consequences when you make more money. And therefore, there is an inherent disincentive to increase your income. If we can think of a program, and this is one that we believe would be a valuable proof of concept program. Again, finding resources that don't require extra money, so maybe it's a philanthropic donation. The county has even looked at their alternative placement escrow funds as a potential source, other partners who are interested in seeing how this could work. But if we are able to create a program, leverage the tons of research, because there are many pilot programs across this nation, especially on the West Coast. Um in regards to direct cash assistance, Denver, et cetera, that are extremely successful. And if we are able to therefore create a shallow subsidy program for individuals who would have gotten out of the voucher program, but kind of hold back. Because of psychological reasons, because of, quite frankly, if they get out of the program, they're now back on this waiting list if something should happen. And if we decide that, hey, if, and again, you start with a smaller group, but if you take this leap of faith, we give you this direct cash, you go be great. If something should happen, because we know there's a likelihood, maybe you haven't been able to save as much, you might not have that generational wealth. Don't be afraid, you won't be at the bottom of the waiting list. We've created a carve out in our policy that will allow you to be back at the top of the waiting list if you need to get back in. But we're rooting for you to be successful and for you to move on, then we're able to serve more people. And we're able to get that flow that we need that will allow us to, again, leverage the resources we have, serve as many people as we can. And continue to build for what we know we need in the future. And so this is a new, exciting concept. Yes, we didn't think about it nine months ago, but we um have it here before you now. Because we love to in in include this in the plan, do the deeper research in this implementation phase. Figure out how we can get the funding and the support around it to present to you, to get your full endorsement and support to move forward. But if it's here and it's embedded here, it gives us that vehicle to say to Turner Center, to others, this is a part of our plan, help us. Help us realize it um and then allow us an opportunity to get the data, the research, the support to grow it even larger. And so this is another innovative approach. We really um uh open for questions, but that's the, that's the general framework and the concept for this new initiative.
You're saying your experience has been that the voucher holder is essentially a project-based voucher because they never leave?
They didn't, people do, I mean, do not um want to lose their golden ticket.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
And and then your subsidy program would maybe get rid of some of the stigma. You know, you you you, right, you show up with a section eight voucher, the landlord doesn't want you.
Source of discrimination happens every day.
Huge problem.
Yes.
And and maybe put a timeframe on how long they get the shallow subsidy, as long as they know they can get back to the front of the line and then they're not stuck with, not stuck, they're they're. They're not attached to it forever. You've thought of all this already. They're smart people.
It's actually.
If I could, if I could. I'm sorry, I I this is a very beneficial conversation. We're trying to get through strategic plan review. This is something we have not disagreed being in the plan, so creating a new direct rental assistance program is 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 okay with the commission, and can we move on?
But we're learning something, Roy. No, we should move on.
Yeah, we are, but this.
I was kidding, go ahead.
Okay.
That's fine. We just wanted to get um give you all, because it was the first time, so pardon us. And we're excited, but wanted to make sure we have okay on this slide. If so, then we'll move on, but wanted an.
I'm okay with you coming back when you have a design that we can actually evaluate a source of funding, et cetera, and we can work out the numbers. I'm very skeptical skeptical. That it will result in more federal funding or uh broader use of the voucher money that we have now. I think the concept is interesting. Come back with an actual plan.
Yeah, that's what.
Thanks. Next slide.
Next slide, please. All right, so moving on to goal two, uh we are one-third through. Um and so uh as I said at the beginning, this goal really, you know, focuses more on the people that we serve. Um and you can see the the four um categories here. You know, I do want to say that uh one of the very specific. Uh pieces of feedback that we did get from the commission at the last uh meeting was to sort of decouple uh objective C here uh about homeownership and wealth creation. From the discussion about um, you know, the the systemic racism in the county and and so we've done that. Uh in the plan and and moved that um uh to the background to really make clear that, you know, all of our our programs are intended to be for everyone that that needs them. Next slide, please. Uh so zooming in on uh A, uh enhance H O C's resident services programs. We've uh, you know, had the privilege, I think, kind of half halfway or maybe more than that through the plan to have our new resident services director join and uh work with her team to. Uh try to refine uh, you know, these three uh sort of sub-goals of this um objective. And and this objective is really focused on the resident services programs that we offer directly. Um and so uh, you know, these are the three ways that we would look to prioritize enhancing those services over the next uh five years. Okay.
On the previous slide that we kind of flew by. For this affordable for sale properties program that we haven't had yet. I feel the same as the previous one. Come back when you have a design and a funding. And a number of people to be served and how they'll be impacted and then we'll be ready to evaluate it.
Yes, ma'am. And and the, you know, that previous slide was, again, just the. And, and the, you know, that previous slide was, again, just the, the sort of summary of these four. And then we have a slide that kind of dives in a little deeper to, to each one. So this was A. Next slide, please.
Is, is the afford, is the homeownership program? I mean, we're approving right now, you know, the sale of some of our properties for homeownership.
That's not creating affordable for sale, that's disposition.
Well, it's disposition of rental housing and so that it becomes.
Well, we can go, could you go to the next slide, please?
I interpreted this to be, we would.
So here's the, here's sort of the zoomed in on, on the item that you're, you're discussing. And you can see here, you know, this was again, actually, you know, spurred by Red, the real estate divisions, you know, bringing forward of, of some of those initiatives as well as, you know, looking at our work in Heritage Emery Grove, where there's a, you know, significant for sale component. And, you know, I think the idea is to, you know, again, a signpost that this is something we want to look for opportunities to provide, you know, when, when resources allow.
I would say I would also be interested in a presentation on our mortgage purchase program before we commit to maximizing it to understand better how that operates. Because, and be this my fault in my five plus years on the commission, I have yet to understand that program, I think, so.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, too.
Happy to do that. We actually did, I think we, we have one. And I, I know we provided it to the commission at the time, but I'm not sure if we actually, anyway, we'd be happy to, to revive that and update it.
This is included also in our quarterly reports, but I will lift it up and we can definitely.
I circled it in the quarterly report and I spent a lot of time on two pages of it and I still would appreciate a.
Absolutely, and it's thriving, it's doing very well, so we will come back and share more about it.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. And so the, this objective is really focused on the waitlist and, you know, two pieces here. Again, what we do, the resident services objectives, you know, cover all of the ways that we want to provide services to the applicants on the waitlist and, and really think of them as our customers as well. But these two, one is to, you know, really relook at and, and smooth, do whatever we can to smooth the application experience to make it, you know, easier for people, clearer. I know one of the major points of feedback we did get from the town halls and the surveys was that, you know, people really would like to be able to better understand where they are on the waitlist. And so that's, I think, a major item that, that could go in this category. And then number two, and again, absolutely, you know, something that we would want to do, you know, in, in close collaboration with the board and, and following the board's approval. But look at the preferences and the policies and see if there are ways that we could be more, more efficient in terms of, you know, utilizing all of our various resources. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're into our third goal, which is the more inward facing. Excel is a world-class organization. And again, this is an overview of the four and then the next four slides, you know, provide a, a little bit of a dive into each, each objective. Next slide, please. So goal, objective A is Excel is a world-class place to work. As you can see, it's really focused on our HR functions and our, our staff and, you know, refining and, and improving the experience for, for all of our staff here. Next slide, please. Goal, objective B is focused on our customer service functions. And that was another thing we definitely heard as feedback from our customers is that, you know, customer service can always be improved. So we have identified, you know, four opportunities to dig further into, to how we can do that. Next slide, please. So this one is focused on IT and data. And so really the, the sum of this is to make sure that we're maximizing technology, but that any use of technology is not in a way that excludes people, but rather, you know, improves their, their lives and their ability to access HOC. And, you know, highlighting the AI item as, you know, certainly something that I think every organization is, is going to have to grapple with over the coming five years. And, you know, there are risks and there are opportunities. And, you know, that's something that we certainly will have to explore. Next slide, please. And then this is the, the final objective here is really focused on the implementation. And again, this was, you know, a little bit of, of our attempt to capture, you know, some of the, our understanding of, of how the sort of two-phase process would, would go by, you know, memorializing, you know, the next implementation phase, the need to create detailed metrics as well as, you know, high-level goals for each of these objectives. And then, you know, enable easy tracking and revisiting of the plan to ensure that, you know, we're making progress and that, you know, the plan we have still makes sense.
I like Chelsea's comment, I think, earlier about getting metrics quarterly better than annually. It's fine to have an annual report, but.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, as we move forward with the next phase and are able to sort of share more about the technology solutions that we suggest, you know, one of the things we are hoping to do, you know, working with, with the board is to kind of streamline a, a lot of the quarterly reports, even, you know, like the president's report, you know, into a, a one funnel that would give you, you know, a snapshot of all of those metrics. We, we also have performance metrics in our budget, you know, for, for different divisions. So I think one of the, the first steps of that would be to do kind of a metric audit of the existing things that we're reporting on. Ensure that, you know, things we're reporting on still make sense, that, see what's missing. And then, you know, pulling out from that, what, what the board thinks are really the, the key things to track. Next slide, please. All right, so this is our final slide here. You know, really, I think we, we did hear the commission's feedback today. You know, we, we have the, the recorded meeting to go back and capture the exact language. I think we can, you know, certainly try to capture those refinements and, and, you know, move on, move forward. If the commission feels that we're, we're ready to do that with the changes you've made today.
I would like to ask my fellow commissioners who have submitted feedback, if they would be willing to share with each other what your feedback was. I feel as if from the beginning of this process, that has been a missing step. When we were first interviewed by the consultants, I was expecting, and I remember talking to them about getting note, their notes back, summary notes from all of their meetings with us that we would have to take into a meeting where we would brainstorm what we thought. The commissioners, the main interesting ideas and projects and strategies and directions we should go in. Having had that feedback from everybody that they had gathered and we never received that. And I think it would help us a lot. I think it would have helped if we had all shared in the beginning what we thought a strategic plan was, what we were expecting this plan to do, how we were used to working with strategic plans. I think that would have helped a lot in the beginning. I think there's been, it would help now if we begin at least sharing with each other what feedback they're getting because ultimately it's our decision to make, not staff's. I mean, the strategy is the ultimate policy that a board decides. And so I would appreciate anybody who is comfortable sharing their feedback to send it to all of us.
We have, we have now had a presentation and we've had a chance to come, have some conversations about it. And you have given feedback and so that will lead to some subsequent modifications consisting of what we've talked about today. In, in, in terms of the implementation plan that was spoken to on the earlier next to last chart, I think, just what is it, what is the timeframe right now that we can anticipate? Assuming that we have go ahead and approve the strategic plan and we are doing that with understanding that the implementation plan is going to contain the real detailed information around metrics and capacity and things like that. What is the timeframe for when we could expect to see that?
Yes, and so thank you for that question. If we are moving forward with this, this plan at the March meeting, we are proposing a closed session to have a conversation about next steps with contracting and what our next steps are for the implementation plan, to give you more detail there. Our full expectation that is that we will be able to work pretty swiftly. We have been able to identify some really good resources that should be able to be leveraged quickly. And our team has been on standby for quite some time, ready to take the next steps. Roy, I'd appreciate maybe an opportunity, I can come back at that March 6 meeting and share a little bit more timeline information on when we'd be able to roll it out. There's two steps. There's the, first of all, presenting it and getting the approval. And then the next step will be putting it into the actual tool that will be the forward-facing tool for the public as well as the dashboard tool that will be utilized for the board. But we believe that that's something that can happen over the next few months so that we can then move forward with implementing this strategic plan.
Yeah, and I asked that question only because of the fact that based on the conversations we've been having and the comments have come from commissioners, you know, they would see it as a whole, which involves the strategic plan and implementation plan. So in order to be able to, to concretize the, the full buy-in of all of this, we would need to have that not be a lengthy process, okay? So we can move forward exponentially to get that portion of it done. Because now you have the implementation, it simply sets out, the strategic plan, it sets out the framework for what we want to get done. These are things we want to see happen over the next five years. So we know it's a five year. And so we know the implementation plan may be an incremental plan, okay? Sets forth what we anticipate over those five years are going to happen. Because all this is not going to launch on the same day and we understand that. So with our understanding, let me just ask our fellow commissioners, are you all prepared to, to, to base upon the comments and base upon coming back with a final revised document based upon our conversation today? Are we prepared to go ahead and advance and give, make just, give authority to the staff to go ahead? And so we can begin to move forward to a point where we can consider this at our March meeting?
I'd support that. Yes.
Yep.
I'm prepared to authorize staff to further develop the plans and bring them back for our approval.
Okay. Jeffrey?
Linda? Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay, and yes for me as well. So with that, if there are no overarching, I want to thank your staff. I want to, I want to piggyback on to Jeffrey's comment and thank you, Jeff, for starting out with really acknowledging all the work that's been done on this plan. I mean, there's a lot of effort that's gone on, you know, just coordinating with the consultant and, and, and working through all of that that had to be done. And then, and I'm really happy that the staff has been able to pick up a lot of and be able to be our voice really in this process to make sure that what was finally coming out that we are seeing now reflected the feedback that we have been able to give and the feedback the community has given. Now, one of the things that I did acknowledge that I could see when I read the section dealing with the comments that came from our stakeholder meetings and things like that and comments and being present at the meeting that was held at the in-person meeting with, with, with our community down at the Armory Civic, Civic Center, that a lot of those comments I see reflected in the goals and objectives that have been set forth in the plan. So I want to acknowledge that that's been done. So I appreciate that work that has been trying to connect those pieces of it along with the feedback you've gotten from staff as well as from the commission. So again, I want to thank everybody for their time, it's been worthwhile. And we'll continue to do this. I mean, the strategic plan is a document, but the, it, it becomes alive with the implementation plan. And we intend to make sure that this is not a shelf product. This is really the lifeblood of how HOC is going to go the next five years. So, and again, we will make adjustments over the five years. There'll be things that we may take out and put in and whatnot. So it's a, it's a living document. It's not going to be a static thing. So thank you all very much for your time and appreciate you. If there, unless there's some other comment must be made by another commissioner, we will, we will convene, we will, but we will not convene, we will in fact close council, we will end this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.